For the Route 130 sidewalk improvements to as fatada destruction in the amount of $256,560.
I'll say.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mrs. Flode? Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2017-138 authorizing the engineering for the Route 130 sidewalk improvements project to the amount not to exceed $34,000.
So moved.
Say.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mrs. Flode?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2017-139 authorizes payment of accumulated sick days to Howard Davenport in the amount of $30,500.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mrs. Flode?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. Next is 2017-140. This is approving corrective plan for the 2016 audit.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mrs. Flode?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2017-141. This is a resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for the purchase of an odor and corrosion control chemical fee system for the Willowbrook pump station in the amount of $27,775.
So moved.
Say.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mrs. Flode?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2017-142 authorizing executive session to discuss the following: CWA contract negotiations and 903 Oak Avenue litigation.
Seven minutes.
Say.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mrs. Flode?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. And motions, if we have, I have, we would like to hear a motion pointing Mary Ellen Pierce to the Green Team for a turn to expire 12/31/2019.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mrs. Flode?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. So, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask the council's indulgence and move number 10 up to number one so that we don't keep Dan here all night waiting to give his seven to 10-minute presentation. That's what he told me, not, but I'm putting words in his mouth. But I'd like to welcome Dan here, Dan Fischena, who is going to repass on electric charging stations. Go ahead, Dan, please. Okay, we'll pass him around.
Okay.
Yeah, we have it in the packet, but it's good to have a clean version. That's okay.
Hello, I'm gonna talk about the EV charging stations. So before I start, I'm gonna give a little terminology. So first, there's three types of charging stations. The first type are type three. These are called the fast charging stations. These are, would be the Tesla Superchargers. So Tesla actually installs these for free, and then they pay for electricity at the location they charge themselves. It's a win-win for everybody. It just drives business into location. There's also Chadmo, which is another standard. They charge, you can lease them or purchase them, or for a leasing company, or a paid company, they can actually install one. They charge about $3 to $5, $3.6 dollars a day for a lease, and they give back about 8, 180 miles per car, per hour back. Then there's the level two chargers. These give back about 20 to 30 miles. These will be the destination charger, the brandy level two chargers. There are essentially 220 outlets with 220, 40, a dryer outlet essentially, hooked up to a specialized port. Now, some of these are free, so what Tesla will do is they would actually install two destination chargers and then install a third other charger, so that other cars can actually charge at their location also. So it's kind of a compromise, which is good. And then there's also level three, or level one. Level one is the typical household outlets. It's nothing that's huge. This would not be for, to drive business into the town. It would more be for residents if they want to stop working, stopping or working at the location. For employees, it's not really that conducive to bringing business into the town. So, in our area, we are actually in a EV charging desert. There's nothing around. So we could actually have a knockling in that area. I just checked it, I think about a month ago. The little area there is where we are. And then, so there's nothing around. And then the Tesla Superchargers were actually right in the middle. And another thing is Tesla's actually considering installing a Supercharger somewhere in our area, in our, I don't know, Delray and Moorestown area. So hopefully we can actually bring them in. This would be a win for us, bring more business to our town. So then, so just to give you an idea, currently there's 13,000 electric cars in New Jersey alone. Next year, there's gonna be 10,000 more. And then after that, another 10,000. And it's gonna grow more and more and more. This is mostly due to the more affordable cars that are coming out. They're also longer range, so it makes it more sense for people to purchase them. So there's gonna be more usage. Now, speaking about usage, currently I do have some statistics on it. People use Superchargers about 5% of the time for charging, and just public chargers, other EVs use it about 7% of the time. So it's a fair amount of charging that people do outside of their home. Turns out to be around four to 10 times a year. And it's gonna grow because it's gonna be more and more charging. Now, the value of the charging station, I've seen this from the Hamilton Supercharger, and I've been actually been watching it for the past month. And I'm a little far on this one, but that charger gets used 24 times a day. And people go in and out of Panera, they spend money, and that goes back, some of that goes back into town. So just from our own business association in Delray, I estimate that that brings about $43,000 into the town for just having the spots there. That's kind of just insane. There's also Cranberg Station. I've watched that spot. And 10 times I've watched it, they've been at either 50% capacity or 75% capacity all the time. Even at 5:30 in the morning, they're at 50% capacity for charging. It's, I don't know why, but it is. There's, since our area does not have any stations, stations around, and the stations around are not situated in businesses, we can actually bring the people who want to charge into our business in Delray. It's kind of like the whole thing with, if you go to Friday's or Chili's, Chili's offers you a dollar to charge, and Friday's doesn't, you're gonna want to go to Chili's because you're saving a dollar. Another example, there's actually one in, where's it, Marleton, at the Promenade, that's where the Redstone is, and PF Chunks will charge there all the time. Now, the best locations for that, best location would be a local business, not a chain. So near Juniors is probably best because Juniors has been changing, and the stores in that vicinity aren't changing. There's also Target Center, it's also a good location. The old Sam's Building, when not actually, shops in there, that's also a good location. Other locations are near Meadows, the Red Lobster Throwbacks, or anywhere people want to spend money and eat. The bad locations would be anywhere where there's a, you have to cross a major highway, because you don't want people crossing the highway, especially 24 people a day or more. They're asking for trouble. So, I know Waldo wants to actually install one around there, but people are crossing, they're gonna chick-fly. Don't want somebody to have, it's just a bad idea. And because they have to wait an hour to charge, they're not gonna be there just waiting, they're gonna wanna do something, eat. Now, the other considerations are charging for electricity. So it depends on who runs it and how they're doing, how they're doing it. So, so the Tesla model is they drive people in by offering free electricity, and then businesses get the, the business. The other one is you charge the commercial rate of electricity, and then people can deal, a little bit of low commercial, but not as much revenue, but any company that's cheaper. So the big model is charging more than the general rate of electricity, and that drives people away only if they're desperate, which is good. And then, there's also other profit ones, so.
Sorry, I'm having trouble with the connection. Please try again in a moment.
And there's Simmons. In New Jersey, they also offer grants for it. So for level two, they offer up to $5,000 per charging station for a level two, and $500 for a level one. So, $250 off for a level one. It also could be a growth for Delray. It, it's gonna become a wave. You can kind of see it if you actually look and do research. There's a bunch of countries that are just banning new car, banning gasoline and diesel car sales. Actually, non-state structure doing that, coming in 25th, structure could be banned now, but there's other countries too. So they're gonna be flooding the market in a couple of years. And it can also generate revenue from a car spot or, I mean, it can, I mean, people do it for, for, generally for funds and tickets, maybe going charging for. Any questions? Give your terms.
Yeah, real briefly, just so that we're clear. So the Tesla Superchargers, actually, the electricity is free? Tesla pays for the electricity?
Tesla pays for electricity. And then they, the actual car owner is actually charged for free also.
So, so does that just fit Tesla's?
As of right now, yes. But they're actually in talks with others to.
Just couldn't imagine how their model would work that way. So, so they, so there's various types. The Tesla Supercharger would, would be geared towards Tesla, but there are other types, and it really depends on if the shopping center wants to pay for it or the store wants to pay for it.
Yes.
Which was, well, from England.
Well, it depends on who's the provider. So, so for the truck Supercharger, it would be Tesla. Destination Charger, it might be the store owner, just to round out.
So it all depends on the contract, I guess, with the manufacturer?
Yes.
With his name.
And the other question I had is security?
There's not really much security going on here, because it's a, all it just looks like is a sting.
No, I got you, but I mean, like, security, if somebody was tampered with it, or, I mean, you never know around.
Ah, yes. Actually, I did have, I was actually looking for, looking at that. There's some that are in less than ideal areas, and don't actually tamper with people in the cars or anything.
What does the Hamilton Square Mall have? Do they have a Tesla, or do they have?
Um, they actually, the Hamilton has a Tesla. It's right in, right back to the Barton Inn. So if you drive up Route 130, they'll, they'll mark it, and it'll just right at the back of the one, actually.
And how many stations do they normally provide? How many would be, like, a good number?
It depends. It's usually between four and 12.
Okay.
But I've seen some, uh, Delaware actually has, I think, 24.
How many Teslas are in the immediate area? I know you told me about the one I saw.
Um, I can only confirm that, so there's, I don't know, not all Teslas, just three EVs. There's three confirmed EVs in Delray, and then three plugging EVs, plugging drivers in Delray, which are the Bolt, the C-Max. There's one in St. Vincent, and I think more, 10 or more in Moorestown.
No, I know. He provided that information. No questions or answers?
Yeah.
Those, those alone, because right now Tesla.
Well, I think they're doing as an inducement for people to buy the cars, because one of the big drawbacks is there aren't enough of these charging stations around. So people get worried.
How long does a car, if you had, let's say, three or five, how long would a car need to charge?
Uh, about an hour.
An hour.
So that's why it's actually very amusing to.
Shopping.
Shopping, bringing in business, because it's an hour.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Dan, appreciate it. So, you know, we'll have a chance to mull it over a little bit, figure out what the next steps may or may not be. And we'll use you as a resource. Maybe you can help us to.
Yeah. We just hope we get it instead of, well, not while, because.
Yeah, okay. Very good.
Dan, thank you so much. Nice meeting you, talking to you. Take care.
So, as we move forward, toward the record, we'll note that Councilman Schwartz is here, and we will go from 10 back up to number one. So you didn't miss much, Mike. We're gonna, we're gonna talk briefly, talk briefly about membership renewal, renewal for Burco, Burco Jeff. I think we've all had a chance to review it. Jeff, unless there's something that is outstanding, I think, you know, I would think that, that it certainly makes sense. If anybody has any questions on, on this, you know, rather than going into a prolonged discussion, I think we're all good. Do we need to do anything?
Yeah, we need to do a resolution, a public meeting.
Okay. Everybody in council, okay to do that? Seeing all the heads nodding, so let's do that. The hardship waiver for 99 Talks Club.
Same as all the rest. They've been through this before. They've marketed it for a period of time, and they have had no income-eligible buyers pick the property, and therefore, based upon the agreements that we have, is that they're entitled to a hardship waiver. And we haven't had an issue with these. We haven't been interested in it, but just, so just wanna make township council aware of it.
Right. So next is one that I, I think, really, we just need to figure out what date we might want to do this. This is the public forum to discuss the COA issues that, that the township faces. My understanding is that, for the most part, historically, we'll have our planner give some background. We'll have our attorneys on alert to keep us from saying anything that would in any way put us in jeopardy with, with the ongoing lawsuits. But it would give an opportunity for us to at least give the public all the information historically of what's been going on, and then give them a chance to ask questions. Now, whether we can answer the questions or not will depend on what the attorneys say. And the location would, is obviously gonna be in the courtroom. It's just a matter of the, of the date, available dates. And this, we might, we might like to combine this with the next agenda item, and that's the August work session schedule. And I have a suggestion in that our public meeting is on the 1st, correct? That we, we use the 15th as a, as this COA meeting, and the 22nd as the next work session. And therefore, if we have anything, would it just be COA? Would we be limited to COA? Could we do anything emergent on the 15th if we had to, as long as we advertised it? We move the schedule from the 8th to the 15th?
Yeah.
Depends on how you.
Depends on how you advertise it.
Okay. So maybe, maybe, you know, I don't know what everybody's schedule is about. I talked to a couple of people in council, and they indicated that they would be okay. It's okay. For my schedule, it's not good for you?
No.
What, what?
Then we cancel the 8th.
Oh, we cancel the 8th and move it to the 15th. We just really move the work session off and put this on. Or that'd give us some time.
So we're canceling the 8th?
Yeah.
And we're gonna have a meeting on the 15th?
The following Tuesday, the 15th. And it would be primarily for the COA issue, but it would also, if we had anything that came up, because it will be, you know, 21 days from, from the public meeting to the work session, something that came up that had to be discussed.
So you're keeping the 22nd work session?
That's correct.
Was there, was there an issue with just making the 8th that the only item on the agenda? As opposed to canceling, just not following? Sorry, it's been a long one.
It's okay. I had something on the 8th, but I'm not sure if that was the moveable. How's everybody else's schedule on the 8th?
I'm not available.
You're not available on the 8th. And Patty's not available on the 8th.
Okay, so you just got to, you're, you're, you're canceling the 8th anyway?
So, oh, wow. It was worse than I, than I thought.
Well, it isn't that I'm available, but I'd have to be out of here in a certain timeframe, and I don't wanna go to a meeting.
Yeah, if we can, you know, unless there's a, so Patty, you're, you're having an issue with the 8th and the 15th, so it doesn't really matter. Tyler, you have any issues with the 8th and the 15th?
I just have to move some things around, but.
Is that possible?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just thinking for COA, I'm just thinking in August, a lot of people are away. Do you wanna wait till September, or do you wanna get this as soon as possible to, for people to know? When I first thought I didn't know what you were thinking, and I thought, well, you know, maybe September when everyone's back from vacation, but, but maybe they, they need to have it as soon as possible.
Well, there's, there's, you know, there's two schools of thought on that. One is, we said we're gonna do it. I don't wanna say, okay, well, we're gonna do it in two months.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't want anything to appear, anything other than as, as soon as we could. And then, and then my experience, I only have one left in, in, under college, but September is typically, for parents, crazy. I know vacations, there's a lot of vacation time, especially in August, but, you know, we're kind of flipping a coin. Is it gonna be, is it gonna be practice, or back to school night, or back to whatever? September gets a little crazier.
Well, I have this idea, of making a work session on the 15th, and having the 22nd as your public and possible work session. This way, it's the end of, so people coming back.
I don't know that, like, maybe more. When's Labor Day?
No, Labor Day is.
Labor Day, a day later, yeah.
A week later.
Labor Day is, and you know what? As you get into the end of August, families are busy getting ready to get their kids back to school. There's, there's really no good, I mean, I don't care. I, I think I'd rather have it in August.
Right, I'm still saying August.
No, no, I know.
Yeah. And then.
So, what have you, what?
Yeah, I, I think.
I mean, I, I, the 8th, I know I may have a problem. The 15th, I'm not sure if I'm gonna be in town, so we'll go by that.
So, there's meeting on the 1st, public meeting, the 8th, and then meeting 15th and 22nd.
Is that all right?
Oh, that's fine, I know, yeah. I mean, you know, just set these down to the way we should.
Yeah. Yeah, I wanna give some flexibility in case we need it. We don't, you know, it'll be listed as the COA meeting, whatever we call it. And we'll, we'll still have the opportunity, if we need to, to vote on something that is, is timely or, or emergent. So if that's okay, if we move forward, anybody have any objections?
No.
You have those? They make sense?
And that's going to be, it's a normal meeting time, it's at 10:00 PM.
At 7:00, yeah. Yeah, I'd like to keep, you like to keep that consistent too, because that was always an issue. Okay? Next is the Rancoas Creek Greenway, and the pictures were a little difficult to understand, but I wish we could Adobe professional, we could just import them rather than rescan them. That would be great, wouldn't it? Really? That's it? Can I see them? So, so Jim, are you, did you get a, did you get a good look at this, how they, what they wanna do?
Yeah, Matthew Johnson, who works for the county planning department, has been reached out for us, an informal matter, to review the plan for the bike way or trail. And he wanted to get input from our office and the council, because they run into a tight condition as you, as you cross the sewer plant, because the trail is, goes along River Drive, a long burn between, you know, the river and the road. But as you get, as you start to cross the plant, that green space where you put the trail off the pavement gets very narrow and, and a pretty steep slope, and there's vegetation. So their plan is right around Alden to move the actual trail into the road, so it'd be a shared, you know, vehicle and bike lane within the road. But by doing that, you cut down the cartway available for, for, you know, car traffic in the road. The bike lane is, is five feet wide, or is it eight? It's, it's such a distance wide with the bike lane and then the separation that you need, that it reduces the driving space down to 20 feet. There's room there to work, but by doing that, you would have to eliminate parking along River Road during that, along that segment. So you basically have no parking on River.
In front of the plant?
In front of the plant, River Drive.
Is that here?
In front of the plant, yeah, from, from Norman to Alden. We looked at it, I mean, I don't, I don't know how often a car actually parks there. And there's no houses that have direct frontage on River Drive at that point, because they're both, the only, the only two residential lots that front, have frontage along River Drive are corner lots, and they have frontage on the opposite streets. Actually, one is a commercial. And then the one on the northern side of Alden, similar situation, has only side frontage. So I didn't see too big of an issue with it. You would have to do no parking. You don't even have to sign it unless it throws an issue.
Jim?
Yes.
One thing is, when there's construction at the plant, that's where the construction people park, because there's no parking at the plant.
Well, actually, like a temporary.
I know, just.
Yeah, you can. How about, how about normal day-to-day, you park there though?
No, never.
How, how long would it be in the street before it gets back onto the?
Uh, it would be a whole block width between Alden and Norman and Alden. And then it, it goes a little bit further along River Drive as you go towards, towards the next.
Riverside.
Yeah, as you go towards Riverside, where it tapers back into the green space, to the lawn area. And plus, there's a heavy, there's a heavy landscaping in front of the plant between Alden, so it's kind of better to be in the road, so you can stay that landscaping and buffer the plant. Where they do go into the lawn area behind the curb, it's still kind of within the plant frontage. Some landscaping will have to come out. We pointed out, out to them that, you know, we want probably supplemented or something put back to help, to buffer, especially when you get that viewpoint from Alden, looking at the corner, you kind of know.
They responded that they would do that, correct?
Yes, they did. So, I mean, it's.
It's not a safety issue, like having them come in the road and then.
No, that, that's the whole point of what they wanna do and the restriction, because to make it safe, they have to add in the appropriate, like, lane markings and, and buffer striping to keep, you know, the vehicle traffic and the, and the bicycle traffic separate. They would, they would realign the curb too on the, on the river, on the side of River Drive. They have to actually move it in two feet to get that width. They need a 20 feet of, of, you know, vehicle pavement, plus the board striping, plus the bike lane. But there's nothing wrong with that frontage, and they can easily do it. There's a four-foot grass strip in front of the sidewalk, and they can easily just boot the curb back. It'd be part of the overall project. So this is just an interim stage. If, you know, the council's okay with it, then we go back with them saying, proceed.
They're pledging a paper?
Yeah, yes. I believe so. But they have an action for anyone to put that.
Yeah.
It's their idea.
The biggest issue is just a loss of parking, but it doesn't seem like it'll hurt anything. There's plenty of alternate parking on Norman and Alden and now River Drive. And you're probably, probably better off keeping people from parking in front of the plant anyway.
Exactly.
And, you know, and especially where that, that intersection's a little tight anyway.
Yeah.
Of all the intersections back there, that's, that could be the tightest. And there's also the entrance to Amaco Island. I don't know if there's parking up there for, you know, emergency, not.
There's parking. There's parking in Amaco, which is a gravel lot. I don't know if they ever, above that park, there's, you know, parking.
Well, there is parking, so, I mean, could the construction, would the construction people be allowed to park in it?
Uh, we'll just, I mean.
Worst comes to worst, we can just close it off that, that.
Yeah, I'm not too. For temporary construction here.
Okay. So are we inclined to, let's go.
Yeah, well, we'd be supportive of the idea of the greenway anyway, so.
If it's okay with y'all, I'll put the other, like, a letter confirming that, you know, to document, to, to document that you're okay with.
So do we wanna, do we wanna mention a bit about construction time? That we, that there may be a possibility temporarily, once in a while? Do we have any type of construction work that needs to go on that we may need to shut it down for a day or two just so they can do the work and park there? Do we, I mean, I.
I, I can maybe.
I don't want them to be surprised.
The counties are.
Yeah.
I mean, why's a lot added to it? It's the counties' park, so we could use that parking in the instance where we're doing construction.
Yeah, I'll put it, because of the land and nature, you know, there, there might be limited interruptions in.
But I don't want them to be surprised either.
Need to act, even if they're parking, you might need to get somebody up along.
Exactly.
Anyway, just to go the, run the trails and we'll let them know.
Yep.
That, you know, I'll put something in there.
I think we, we wanna, maybe we're, we're asking in a persuasive way to say, if we need to, and we need to have construction people in, we'd like to be able to let them park in the Amaco Island parking lot. That way, we don't ever have to block the bike way if you'll let us park in your parking lot, where you're like what.
I'll add some persuasive comments.
There you go. I like how you do that. And, that sounds good. Okay, let's move on to the road closures. Jeff, we have an update on what dates they want.
Yes, just an update. I told you there's gonna be a road closure of Creek Road for construction near the Anderson Farm, that bridge that's right there. It'll be from August third to August eleventh. It's a Thursday through a Friday, and they've already provided us with a detour, which would be for landing road and Bridgeborough Road, so it doesn't impact any of our roads.
Okay. Just a heads up, we don't do anything, right?
Another thing we got, Jeff, I'm sure we'll get complaints, Brian. What can we do to make sure that food traffic doesn't take a shortcut to, like, if they're coming from one thirty, no, one thirty, two ninety-five down to the bridge?
I mean, it's not what we can do, but there'll, there'll be a detour sign at Fordham Mill, Fordham Mill, you know, landing road, so people that don't know the way around will be going through that way, but we can't stop people from going through neighborhood.
Is it public roads or they?
Public roads, sure.
Yeah, the only thing is people can say all the time about the food traffic.
When the detours, where does that go?
You know, also Summer Hill.
Just maybe a suggestion to go to Fordham Landing, there's still.
Yeah, it'll be a sign, but it'll still say local traffic. It doesn't allow the people to get in the summer.
You know, you people in the summer.
Oh, I'd see it all through.
Is there any way we can designate that country road for local traffic during that period?
Well, the whole detour is gonna say local traffic.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be a detour other than local traffic.
Yeah, the problem arises, Mike, is that the people know, and if you can come to the entrance to Summer Hill or the Grand, if you can get over to the, to Hartford, you can get around the.
And all the residents, the one on the Grand Boulevard? You're tired of people, the constant flow of traffic from one to the other.
Well, I was just wondering if, like, you know, I mean, you might not only have all of them, maybe we'll make fifty percent of it by. Seven's at either end, so.
That's what I was saying.
You know, local traffic only for the, for that.
Yeah, well, I imagine you won't be able to come on Creek Road off of Bridgeborough, right? That's kinda.
So Jeff's right, I mean, once you pass it, you're gonna have to take one of them. But you're gonna expect a lot of calls, Jeff, 'cause you know who's gonna call you.
Okay, next we have some sewer adjustments.
You know, I apologize, 'cause I know I said I didn't put the block in lock, but the property in reference, or the property we're referring to has submitted for an adjustment on July tenth and indicated that the water bill from the Jersey American Water Company, that they had a mistake on the billing. The Jersey American Water Company made an adjustment, but in making the adjustment, they billed four months of water consumption in the month of January, which is the month, obviously, that we use for computing the bills, and it made the billing too high based upon reviewing the periods in previous years and in the current year. I would recommend that their billing reflect eighteen thousand gallons. That's what they've been running at. There's really nothing else. They provided all the information and backing, showing the credit that the Jersey American Water Company requested. And I'll update this kind of with the block and lock. I'm sorry, I don't have it with me, but that, that this is specific to.
And you'll put that on the public meeting?
Yes.
Anybody have a question, problem with that? So we're okay to do that? And we have some new owner adjustments, which is always good, since the houses are selling.
Sewer regulations indicate that anytime there's a new residential owner, they get the minimum bill and it would be one thirteen Natalie nine five oh nine Meridian, one of three Casa ten sixty Orleans, returning work on Hawthorne by three oh six Chester, five fourteen Main, two eighty-two twenty Chase Drive and one fifty-two York.
Okay.
I have that on there all the way. That's, that's about eight, eight or nine. He went pretty quickly there, but.
Eight or nine, eight or nine more, more folks have, maybe they've come into Del Ran and purchased a home there, that's awesome. Okay. So next we have street signs and, and it's quite a list of signs and that the, well, I'll let you give the overview.
Yes, we discussed this once before in terms of taking the old signs. There was a requirement that we replace our street signs over a period of time, and so we have all of the older signs back in the Public Works, here inside, but in the Public Works area. And we suggested a possibility of selling these signs and utilizing the funds and giving them to the historical society. I gave you a list of the inventory of the signs and discussion, a couple ways to try to sell the signs. And that's, I guess, one of the things we wanna do is, we talked about the possibility of tying into Del Ran Day, but obviously, you know, there's a lot of signs and not a lot of people enough for Del Ran Day, so the possibility of putting these online, indicating the availability of the signs and then having a specific date and time in which people would put in a bid for the signs just in case there's competition for them. And you just have to raise the funds unless anybody has any other ideas.
Well, so the, you know, the, the two factors, I think, are going to be, if it's gonna be competitive or if we're just gonna set a price. And, and I think that setting a price is going to be much easier.
Yeah.
We'd probably make a lot, we could probably make more money being competitive and bidding it up.
But what do you do, first and then first served?
It would, it would, well, it would have to be, you know, maybe they have to submit via email and the email's of all timestamp.
Or do you have?
In a tie we put the.
Could we, I'm, now on Del Ran Day, but don't we have a township-wide yard sale?
We do.
Could someone, man, maybe we could have this township building, have the, all of the street signs and people would come. When, when is it? Is that in September or October?
It is, and less.
Usually that'd be for Del Ran Day.
So.
So if.
There is actually an extra week in March, like, there's an extra Saturday.
This time?
I don't even, not sure of the date for Del Ran Day yet, but I'm assuming. It's the last Sunday in September.
But could we use the yard sale day to sell?
So whether they'll have the yard sale the twenty-third or whether they'll have the yard sale the following Saturday, I'm not sure.
So I think it's, it would be cool. My only concern is four people walk up on the same sign. And now what?
Well, if you set a price, well.
And there's one sign and four people want it.
At the same time?
I've, I've seen, I've seen Best Buys on Black Friday, three o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
You know, so do we wanna just say, look, this is what they are, first come, first served? Submit an email, this time we make it public. There's a couple, there's, you know.
I wouldn't mind this.
When, when it says two-sided or whatever it said, does that mean both? Like, the whole corner? Some at the end, it said two-sided or double-sided or two, two sides.
Some of, some of them aren't apart.
Right, so, so for instance, the one that's the corner, that's my house. If I got that, it would be, it would be both street signs?
I don't think so. I think we, I think we have those all.
Okay.
I've looked at them at least a half dozen times and quite frankly, I can't remember if it, I don't remember seeing some signs anymore with two, two sets.
Right. So, you know, I, I love the show. You know, if.
Let me ask, let me ask a question. Is there a reason why we can't do like a silent auction at Del Ran Day?
Because you won't get as many.
Do you have any, any people that are?
Yeah, I mean, no, the answer to your question, no. But there, there are, you know, there's.
Yeah, but if they're left over, we could always, we could always do the second auction the next week. We could do it at the township.
With the ones that are left?
You make a silent auction, meaning you have the sign and you say, the highest bidder. People put a silent bid in, and then whatever the highest one gets it. And then if they don't, the signs you have left over, we do it again from here. It's just, I'm just, you can do it that way.
Now, there's multiple ways to do it, it's just what, what your preferences.
No, I, I agree, but any way we can promote it and get it out.
Who would do that? With, with whose responsibility?
Why can't you do first?
All lots. Go ahead.
Mr. President, I think that the, the combination, maybe, if you wanna do a silent auction at Del Ran Day and then whatever's left over, put it on all at the highest price. That's kinda what I'm fishing for. You can't have fifteen different auction days for signs.
No, I'm just saying, have a second.
Again, do Del Ran Day and then you can post a south Del Ran Day. Put them all in line for sale and put a fixed price.
Because Mal is here.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a consideration, Jim. How many signs total will we talk about?
All these here.
Yeah, I understand.
You just gotta auction, you need a bucket.
A bucket or?
No, it's not a bucket, it's, it's a sheet of paper. So you put your name and you bid twenty-five dollars. The next person, no, no, you don't, it's, it's right there. And then you put, then you say, I'm putting my name and I put thirty-five dollars. And then you put your name and you put forty-five dollars. And then at the end of the day, you hope that the person who bid one hundred seventy-two fifty is, is a legitimate person.
And, and you have.
Not working way back.
You can have seventy-five sheets stapled together and each, each name of the street can be on each sheet. And then you have the lines, and when the person says, okay, I want Kobe, you go to Kobe and you put your name and whatever.
I want James Street.
You go to James. So, so, but, but the thing is, I mean, I guess, now we're gary with that, it is, are you guys okay with doing that at Del Ran Day? I mean, the money's going to you guys.
Right, yeah, we're willing to do whatever you need us to do, you know, that's why we're here.
Right, it's extra money, it's money that you guys will be bringing in, so.
It's James Court, Jim, and there's only one, so I'm just gonna go at a big, big premium.
Bring, bring your big bucks.
Hundred and seventy-six, seventy-five.
The other thing is, I think it's another thing to add interest to Del Ran Day.
Yeah, I think it would be nice at Del Ran Day.
So what is there about, is there about? There's about, there's about a hundred and fifty streets, but some of them have multiple signs, like Temby Chase Drive has seven.
Yeah, so Brown Street has seven.
And the ones that have a lot of intersections, there's more.
So you go to the top seven, the last, the last seven that's writing the name and they're not, and they're now.
So, you know, if you, you know, the twenty-five bucks, geez, if, you know, we don't have to do all the details here. Just tell us, if you wanna do Del Ran Day silent auction and then do the rest of it on that line, we'll, we'll work it out.
And you, if you get yourself some money, you could do a, like, a min, minimum bid, ten bucks. So you at least get ten on a sign. You're right, that's something, I'm just saying.
If, you know, at twenty-five bucks.
We wanna subject everyone to like seven auctions or fifty.
Yeah, I, I think that if we, if we get the, the people that are interested and we advertise it enough and the people that are interested in getting their sign, I know I will be a bidder, and, and they buy their sign, if it averages twenty-five bucks, you're talking about, you know, six, seven thousand dollars.
We need the money.
You know, I've gotta pay Mal, Mal Sal.
That's the street with my name on it.
Mal Anderson, they have, we have Mal Anderson Street?
No, I said there's no name, no, no street sign with my name on it.
Okay.
You, you hung out on some of these, so I expected, like, oh, sure.
Now, are we working with Mr. Hatch on this?
Yes, you guys will work with that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, we got all ours.
We're good. Okay, so let's do our report, our reports. Jeff was, was anxiously awaiting his opportunity to speak this evening, Mr.
I, I really have, I have two things.
Whoa, wait a minute, hold on. All right, go ahead.
They're real short things. It looks like Bridgeborough, we have about four manholes out there. The manhole, manholes are finally gonna be replaced shortly. We started this process back in December of last year. We've been waiting for approval from the county. We're still waiting for final approval, but it's moving along now. Yeah, and construction has started down at the plant for the replacement of the sand filters. I would've brought pictures, except really the only thing they've done is vacuumed out the media, so there's not a whole lot of exciting pictures.
Parked on River Road, right?
Excuse me?
Parked on River Road.
River Drive.
River Drive.
Yes. So as we start getting construction going along, I'll pass along pictures to Jeff and he can share them.
Well, glad you made it. All right, Jamie, you have anything for us tonight?
Just two quick things. First, the next blood drive is August thirtieth, Wednesday, August thirtieth, one thirty-six thirty. They upped our appointments to fifty because we didn't do it really well at the gas drive, so if anyone's interested, they can come to the clerk's office, call the clerk's office. And the second item is, we received a request from the Rollscap troops that meet here to use the community rooms next Friday night on August fourth to make bagged lunches for the homeless that they're gonna be handing out on August fifth.
Anybody have a problem with that?
What they said is they will be peanut butter and jelly sandwiches and some of them, so.
It's next Friday?
Friday, Friday evening.
Everybody okay with that?
Me too.
Great, thank you. Jeff, do you have anything for us?
Yes, just one thing. Back in May, I've given you a memo on some changes in the police department, some promotions and two hirings. We went through the interview process and we have two new officers that are gonna come aboard on August first and then they'll be going to the Camden County Police Academy, and that is Nicholas Delaco and Robert Fisher.
Isn't he, wasn't he?
Yes.
I told him he's queer.
Brian, do you have anything for us in open?
No, nothing.
Kim, how about anything other than your, beyond what you gave us for your engineer report?
No, just to reiterate, I mean, we had a pre-con, pre-construction meeting tomorrow for the road program, so we're gonna be pushing to get them started, you know, as soon as possible. Other than that, things are coming along. You have any questions for me?
I do. I just got a call from someone on White Marsh. Do you have any idea when, maybe a month, two months down the road, the roads will be?
Finished?
Or even started or?
They'll probably, they'll, they'll start seeing work in August.
Oh, okay.
And that'll be concrete work. And then, but I'm not sure exactly yet which roads are gonna start paving and reconstructing first.
Okay.
But they, the, the concrete works, work will be first, so they'll see a lot of the cars being, being replaced in August.
In August, okay, thank you.
So that means it's tomorrow that you're gonna start?
Yeah, that's our, basically our construction kickoff. Yeah, we'll give them a note to proceed tomorrow as well.
So, so, well, that's great, so you can tell them.
Tomorrow?
That's always good. Good, that's it?
Yeah, I mean, let's see, have anything else? Anybody have any questions or anything?
I don't. Thank you for your, for your report. Danny, you have anything for us tonight?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Jeff and Public Works. We got a report of a refrigerator dumped in Summer Hill in the common area and Jerry got out there and we didn't find out until I talked to Jeff as a follow-up that the door was still in the refrigerator, so not was, not only was it illegally dumped, but it was a hazardous and dangerous situation and I just appreciate. situation. And I just appreciated them picking it up. And anybody that's here, I wish you'd pass along that social media is a great way to communicate things, but on something like this, we tell people all the time to call the municipal building and let somebody know here so that they can get it to the proper authority and have it taken care of. And that's all.
Thanks, Jeff. Tyler, anything to say?
No report.
Michael, anything to say? Patty? Okay, so, so I'm, I'm happy to report that this will be the last recorded meeting that we have for videotaping. We will be streaming live, hopefully, all goes well for the next, what a big smile that was. For the next meeting, we are, we are working on improving the sound and the lighting. It's, you know, technology is a wonderful thing, except it's, it's invasive. So sound and lighting, especially in that, or in the big room, we're working on that. For those folks who are not aware, all the past recordings are, are up on the website. If you go to where the agenda's and the minutes were, there's now a link that says video. That's the video of that specific meeting. So thank you, Jamie, for pushing through on all this and learning new technology and figuring out stuff that isn't, I'm sure, part of your actual job description, but you're fortunately, you're willing to take that shot. So that's really all my report. Dan, you have anything for us tonight?
No, no report.
Okay. So I need a motion to go into public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. We are in the public portion of our meeting. So we'll do what we normally do, just go around the room. Jan, anything for us tonight?
I just wanted to thank Jamie for, oh, Jam, Jam Repard, 174 Western Court. So I was able to go on the, online and look at the last meeting, the public meeting, so I wasn't able to come. So even though I was, wasn't there, I was there. So I thank you very much. I look, really been here real well and.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so that was really neat. So I appreciate that.
Good, thank you. Mal, anything for us this evening?
Yes, if you have a couple of minutes, please. Mal Anderson, 725 Perkins Lane, Edgewood Park. I'm here, I guess, in dual capacity, maybe first, I'm president of Historical Society, which most of you know. I'd like to brag a little bit about things that we've accomplished and let you know, I probably should do this at the public meeting, but just to bring you up to date, we have a mayor's photo project, which we've been working on for a few years. And there were 41 mayors in Del Ran, and we've secured pictures of them. We've secured pictures for 31 of them. We have 10 remaining to find, and most of them are from the early years where, you know, photography wasn't that great. So it's an ongoing project and we're sticking with that. We've done personal interviews of old residents of Del Ran, mostly two a year. We've done pretty much since we started a few years ago. We've also, I think, what, two years ago, we've done the interviews, at least one per year, in conjunction with a high school. So we do reach out to the community, reach out to the schools to include the history students in the interviews that we do, and also the audiovisual department. We thought that was a good way that we could kind of get the school associated with what the Historical Society does too, or get them interested, maybe the high school kids. So we do that. We have a, we had to reburial the time capsule. Most of you were there, who were able, and that was an ongoing project. We had, we got that completed.
Well, I'm going to say one thing about that. I want to make sure we, if those pushes, if you're concerned, possibly the pushes on either side, we talked about that, Jeff.
You have to give me something more specific than that.
You want to, you and I to talk about that?
Yeah, we can talk about it.
Okay. Thank you. I heard that, and I was unable to attend your last public meeting, but I heard that the Historical Society received accolades from you for our recent award that we got from the county. Are you all aware of that? You received a history of project award from the county freeholders for a sign project, which, you know, you all know about.
You've been very supportive.
We're, yeah, you've been very supportive, and we're continuing that project again this year. We don't have our research completed, but we're working on it. Most of you get the positive press, and you know that monthly we submit an article on something of value to Del Ran residents, and hopefully that's accepted by everybody as something beneficial. So I think that as a Historical Society, you can see that we're in the business to help out Del Ran, become a better community, better than it actually is now. We have a website that's being taken care of by one of our members, Deb Hammond. And Deb's done a fine job. She's upgrading it probably every month. We're trying to get our positive press articles linked in to where residents can read it at our website through a link. And we've made special note of our projects on there and some upcoming ideas. So we, we do have, and find that that's a good thing for the community at large. We have, we have fundraisers, which helps us with our insurance and taxes. Even though we're tax exempt, we still have to do the preparation, get the preparation done. And we have photocopy and reproduction costs, things like that. So we have fundraisers during the year. And most of them, right now anyway, include an annual hoagie sale, which is three months. And I have some tickets. We have a month or a week left, if anybody's interested, in conjunction with Vidstelly. It's been very well accepted. And we usually sponsor a bus trip every year. And we're talking about having a bus trip this year, possibly to Longwood Gardens around the end of November, right after they set up their display for Christmas. So that, that would be a cool thing to, hopefully we'll get, we'll get some good response from that. We're not 100% sure yet, but we're pretty, we're pretty far down the path on it. We don't have a lot of meeting presentations on the third Tuesday night that we meet here, and thank you for letting us use a community room. We do have, once in a while, have some outsiders come in. We don't really have the energy or the time to get a lot of presentations arranged, but sporadically we do have them, and we're planning to have more. The county leader that, Marissa Bozaroff is the girl's name, she works for the Parks Department, actually, but she tried to take the place of Joe Lawford, who was the county historian. And she has done a fairly well job in taking on a job that she didn't know much about. They have, they have a list of programs that they've developed over a period of about three years, maybe. And these programs are an outreach by the county, and we're going to try to schedule some of them in, in the coming years. So keep your eyes out for them. They're very interesting. We, every year we participate in the county farm fair. I don't know if any of you were able to get out there and sweat to death, but it was, it was pretty bad. And if you know or don't know, the reason they have the farm fair during this time of year is when it was a law in the crop season, and the farmers were able to take a break between spring planting and fall harvesting. And that's why they held the farm fair at this time of year. I don't know why they can't get off of it now. Maybe they can, but I'm sure a lot of people have heat strips or something down there. And as you remember, we participate and always, most likely always will, in Del Ran Day. And we try to have a good display and get people to come in and learn more about our great community. So that's pretty much what we do. We're in our third year of giving history student award. It's a cash award to a high-level Del Ran High School history student. This year, we had enough funds to give a little stipend, basically, to, to history students. So we're trying to upgrade our outreach to the community and just be, you know, good neighbors in the township. So I don't mean to say you're Historical Society, but I just wanted everybody to know how good of a job that the members are doing, besides all the members that participate. I don't do all the work, believe me. And Elaine and the other officers are, are great people. They've taken on a big load. And how long's it been? 2009 since we organized. And we're getting there. If you ever have any needs or wants or questions or anything, feel free to call us. That's pretty much a report from the Historical Society. I had two questions, or I eliminated one of them if any of you are interested in hoagie sale tickets. Anyway, the other one was for Jim. And this is for the fire department. Sorry, Jim. Is the Cleveland Avenue project, is that signed off on now, or have you?
We haven't closed out a contract, a contract yet now.
I, I thought maybe you and I talked before, were there going to be some additions to the driveways of the residents adjacent to the firehouse there? Is there going to be some asphalt placed in there or anything?
This was the stuff that the commissioner came to me and I had spoken to you about. I did respond to the commissioner, so.
Three or four, three or four driveways.
There's two houses, so there's two driveways.
On the opposite side of the street.
We originally thought about putting a paved driveway in, into, up to the right-of-way line, but we didn't want to mess with the pavement that's under the planter box there. We were afraid that was going to lead to a whole fall wax, the whole, all the issues that we had to deal with, trying to get the pavement out of there. So it was neat and clean, and we felt it just leaves where it is.
It was a good job they did.
Yeah.
The, the one question I had, though, that maybe you could go look at if you drive by someday.
Sure.
On the side, on the side door of the firehouse, they replaced, like, they put like brick pavers in there, red brick pavers adjacent to the main door on the side, where they.
The detectable warning surface?
Oh, okay. No, the red bricks, adjacent to the overhead door on the side street.
Okay.
On Cleveland. They used polymeric sand in there, and they just spread it all over, and it's glued itself to the top. And it looks like hell. It looks like they need one of those abrasive, look like, look like a flat iron that they can.
All right, I'll take a look at it.
If you drive by, look at it.
Yeah, of course.
Other than that, it was a great job, and thank you for taking care of that on your extra money that you had. It's been pretty much an asset.
It was, it was, it was common, and the only, like I said, the only thing is, is getting around to getting that done at the same time, trying to get roads that needed to be done. So we, we promised it.
Well, that sure needed it.
Exactly. No, I get you. But at the same time, we also had other roads that were in really bad shape. So we did get to it like we promised, just took a little bit longer than we thought.
It's been fine since it was done. And Jim did, Jim did a great job out there. He was very attentive to all, all the needs of our company.
And he was very attentive.
You too, Mayor. You, you were out there a couple of times. So thank, thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mal.
Mr. President.
Elaine, anything for us this evening? No?
Checkstall 184 Natalie Road. For a hardship waiver, how long does it have to be on the market?
Is that your question, Bill Pluck?
Yeah.
Six months has been a march forward.
So, so we're recording, so if we could, if we could just keep it quiet in the gallery and see whoever's speaking speaks up, please.
Yeah, it says, if no household has executed an agreement to purchase within 90 days of notification of approval or resale price.
So it has to be on the market for six months, and then you can apply. And then if you apply and it's still been 90 days, that's when it takes effect? Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
So are you, are you asking how long before it can be, if they can request a waiver?
Right.
If they, okay. So how long does it have to be on the market before they can request to have a waiver that they can? I'm, I'm not sure that we have the.
I believe that is six months.
Six months?
Okay, thanks.
Anything else, Jeff?
No, that's it.
Good. Jeff, assuming you have nothing, no questions from the public. Mr. Williams?
No.
No, okay.
Except for you want to do my driveway. In Del Lee.
So I need a motion to come out of public?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Right now, we do have to go into executive session, so I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. All right, we are in the executive session.